My mic's on.
Your mic is on.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for August 19th, 2024. This meeting will be conducted in the traditional in-person format here at City Hall, and you may watch it virtually. If you want to follow the meeting, to go to the GoTo Access information that's found on our website. Public comment will be accepted here at the meeting, but not through the GoTo Access channel. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer?
Here.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Krakenberg?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
And Alderman Wilkie?
Here.
Thank you, Julie. Would you please stand as you are able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is the part of our meeting that we always set aside for our citizens' comments. We have three folks signed up this evening. We'll begin with Mr. Michael Murray. Michael, welcome. Would you please go to the podium, I'm sorry, and introduce yourself? That way people at home can hear you.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Mike Murray. As you said, I'm visiting actually from Bloomingdale Township, but I've been spending a ton of time in your community over the last two or three months because we've been working very hard to get a referendum on the ballot for a community mental health board in Winfield Township. I'm very excited to say we were successful. And I'm here because in previous elections, there's been a lot of misinformation that has gotten out into the public. And people are going to turn to you as leaders of the community to get the correct information. So I gave you a packet. The first part lists the most basic facts that people have. And one of the basic facts I like to talk about is the referendum says .05%, but unlike a school board referendum or most referendums that we're used to dealing with in elections, that is the maximum amount. Actually, our committee is recommending an amount half that, and the cost of that is going to be for the average home in your community about $35 a year. I also have in there a list of some of the tremendous things that mental health boards have done and are doing in DuPage County. Right now, there's five townships currently have mental health boards, and we're hoping that we can add three more in this cycle. And I also want to mention that a lot of times, people wanted to put this very complicated issue into a binary choice. It's either this or that. And when you're talking about subjects of mental health, substance abuse, and developmental disabilities, these are very complicated subjects, and this is all hands-on-deck kind of thing. Everybody has to be involved, and that's how we succeed. Your police chief actually came from a community that was the first community, my community, Bloomingdale Township, and our biggest supporter was Chief G. Marisi. When other people were timid, he said, "Go out there. Go out there." I remember it was on the national day out. And then the final thing I want to say, I put in there some of the needs, just the two of it, a fraction of the needs, that are unaddressed in our state and in our community. One of those is for our developmentally disabled citizens. Right now, there's a waiting list in the state of 16,000 people, and it takes five to seven years to get off that waiting list. In a neighboring community, and this is very hard for me to say, we had a woman actually murder her child and commit suicide because she knew she was approaching the end of her life, and she said, "There's no place for my kid to go." So that's how desperate the situation is. Also, there's many programs that we could do with our use that would prevent the problems. And unfortunately, the way our system is set up, we tend to wait till things are a crisis, and then we invest the money. But the mental health board, by funding things that are not funded, it gets to the root of the problem. It gets to it earlier, and that makes a huge difference. We've started in Bloomingdale Township something called the Children's Network, where we try and look at each person from zero to 21 to make sure they get that good, strong start. So we hope to be having a lot of forums that will explain to people, but I'm sad to say, it's really hard to get the word out now, isn't it? So that's why I'm here today, because I know you are influential people in the community, and hopefully you'll digest that material, try to keep it short, and get the word out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Okay. Bob Seabert?
Bob Seabert, Albright Court. Twenty years ago, the City of Warrenville was spending hundreds of thousands of dollars more than it was bringing in in revenue. The city's answer? Add a new tax. But a few ex-aldermen from the late 1990s had a different plan. They had two objectives. First objective: protect the tax cap. The second objective: establish a reoccurring source of new revenue to reduce property taxes. Since these ex-aldermen did not agree that the city would work with them, they came out with a proposal that the two objects, the tax cap and the property tax relief, would be written in the new home rule sales tax ordinance. The City of Warrenville had no defense. First, the issue was caused by the City of Warrenville overspending. Second, in 2011, the property tax revenue would more than double from the Cantera development. Fast forward to today, I believe this is the only city ordinance that both the city council and the citizens voted on. Yet you folks are not following the ordinance. The citizens did their job, but you have failed to do yours. I call this a broken democracy.
Thank you, Bob. Mike Hoffman?
Michael Hoffman, 3 South 436 Second Street. I just wanted to bring in, I have the engineering report that shows Faywell Dam floods us out, and the report that I originally had worked up. And it's nothing that I, every document in here, other than the first seven pages that I did create, are all out of DuPage County Stormwater Management's file on Faywell Dam. There's nothing in here that I created. I literally have tens, or thousands, I'll say thousands, of documents about the Faywell Dam, copies of their documents. And one sticks out my mind, as far as the difference between having, it was a study that they did, and the difference between having Faywell Dam there operating and not. In a 100-year storm, and I want to remind you, we haven't had a 100-year storm, downstream of that dam is four and three sixteenths inches. That's it. You're looking in a 10-year storm, we had, what, an extra 10 feet up here because of it, because of Faywell Dam? It's wrong. It's completely wrong. It's been wrong since they originally built that dam, and they made it worse in the dam modification by eliminating that 48-inch low-flow culvert. That's had significant effects on us as far as changing the normal pool in front of the dam. I just wanted to bring these in because I submitted them to DuPage County in one of their meetings to put them in, entered in the permanent record, and that March 12th meeting. And I've requested the clerk, if she would please submit these and put them in their entirety into the minutes of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else wish to speak who didn't know they needed to sign up? Okay, we'll move on then to official and staff comments. I have just one thing this evening. We have a hearing this Thursday in front of the Plan Commission about a request to consider a use of the property across from us on Butterfield and Batavia Road at the intersection. It's for a gas station mini-mart type operation. There's been a bit of consternation in the community about this proposal, which came from outside the community. It is not something that the city brought up, but it's something that we have to listen to. It's part of our job. I've asked our economic and community development director, Amy Emery, to give you a little bit of history of that property, a little bit of what the proposal is, and the process going forward, so that if you wish to be heard on this issue, you can be heard. So Amy, thank you tonight. I appreciate your stepping in for us.
My pleasure. Thanks for providing the opportunity to share some information about this upcoming process. As you explained, we have an application for a gas station with a convenience store and a drive-through Dunkin' Donuts at the northwest corner of Batavia and Butterfield Roads. This property, just so everybody's thinking of the same exact site, it's immediately south of the post office, and it's just across the street from the Warrenville Horizon Senior Development. As you said, there's been a lot of discussion in the community on social media. We've certainly had a number of calls and emails come into our office as well about this request. And I would absolutely invite anybody who's interested either to learn more, or if you have a comment to share, to attend the public hearing before the Plan Commission this Thursday at 7:00 PM. At the public hearing, the applicant will present the case. They will describe what it is they're looking to do in detail at the location, and there will be opportunity at that meeting for the public to provide comments, and for the Plan Commissioners also to ask questions. There is a staff report about the project that's available on the website now, and it does include copies of the plans as they have been submitted, including a site plan, building elevations, landscaping plans, and more. There's a few key things to know. Decades ago, some might not be aware, there was a gas station on this property. From what I can tell, looking at air photo records, it looks like that gas station ceased to exist and was demolished in the mid-1980s. The property has been zoned B4, which is our motor services district, and it's had that designation for more than 50 years. Over the years, there have been requests for gas stations to be located on this property, and they have been presented to the city, but they have been consistently rejected, either by staff, or if it's gone further, it's been rejected by Plan Commission or Council. The city has a land use plan for this area that was adopted in 2007, and that plan identifies the area as being part of the civic center. And what it indicates for future land uses are office uses, restaurant uses, and retail uses. It does not contemplate any sort of gas station, convenience store, drive-through type use. It's recognizing it as a civic center, a pedestrian space, a community gathering space. If you fast forward to today, so that was a little history for you, fast forward to where we are now, we have an application from a private landowner. I know there were some conversations on social media and some of the calls we've been receiving, believing that the city is building a gas station. We are absolutely not building a gas station. We're not proposing the project, and we're not the developer. It is a private landowner decision. Private property owners have the right to modify their property and to request for changes. They can submit proposals that they feel are best. If they're given, if they're giving staff the opportunity, we will provide them with input before they move forward to a public hearing, but it's still their choice whether or not they want to follow the advice that we provide to them. The City of Warrenville does not control the market. There's been a lot of comments about we have too many gas stations or too many coffee shops. Our ordinance doesn't restrict the number of types of uses that can occur. It just provides guidance for how you would locate them. And again, we can offer advice in these things, but the market is what would determine what ultimately is proposed. And that market also determines the brand. So if you're a Starbucks fan and it's a Dunkin' Donuts that's proposed, our ordinance doesn't get to that level of specificity. It's the market that determines those things. In this particular case, we received the application days before the Warrenville by Design overlay zoning district was approved. As the council is aware, that overlay was developed over more than a year with a great deal of community input. And I'm really happy, as your community and economic development director, to see the tone of the conversation. It tells me that people are supportive of what they read in that ordinance. They're calling for land uses and designs and scales and styles of development that's consistent with that plan, which, again, affirms for me that we have a plan that is reflective of what the community's looking for. During the hearing process for the Warrenville by Design project before the Plan Commission, the applicant in this particular development was present and did speak and ask that the property be excluded, but the Plan Commission did not support that request and brought you the full boundaries as recommended by staff. The applicant for this case was also present for the public hearing, or, sorry, for the city council meeting where action was taken earlier this month to approve the Warrenville by Design overlay. He did not provide any comment during that meeting, but he is very aware of the ordinance being approved. However, because he submitted his application materials days before Warrenville by Design was approved, we are required to review that application in the context of the B4 motor services district, zoning district. And that's really important because the B4 zoning district allows for gas stations and drive-through uses with a special use permit, which requires a public hearing before the Plan Commission. The new Warrenville by Design overlay does not allow for gas stations or drive-through uses, again, reflecting the intent to create a civic center with a very walkable destination in our downtown core. As I said at the top, I would invite the community to attend the public hearing, to share your comments, to hear the case. If you cannot attend, there will be detailed minutes that are prepared and will be available on the website. I do anticipate there will be a lot of discussion at the meeting, and I expect that the Plan Commission will likely continue the case to a date later in September or early October. I don't know the specific date at this time. We will know after Thursday. They will set it to a specific date, and we'll be sure to include that information on our website and in the typical ways that we notify the community about upcoming meetings. Ultimately, in the process, the Plan Commission will make a recommendation. They could recommend approval or denial, and they have a very specific set of criteria that they use to evaluate zoning requests. They are tied to compatibility with the surrounding area, impact on the neighborhood, compatibility with city plans. I think as you continue through the process, you will hear more comments about financial opportunities. That is not a criteria that the Plan Commission uses in their review, but it is something that the city council can consider. After the Plan Commission makes their recommendation, the plans will ultimately come to city council. My best guess on timing for that would be late October or into November. The timing will ultimately depend on the applicant. They will have to spend some time after the Plan Commission public hearing, probably making some adjustments to their documents to provide a final version for your review. So that is the long and short of it, a little bit of history of the site, a little bit about the process in terms of Warrenville by Design, and the fact, in this case, we're reviewing this application on the previous zoning district B4 because of the timing of when the application was received. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions if there are any.
Thank you, Amy. Speaking to the fact that they made their application just before the new regulations went into effect, what would be the benefit to them to come in with the application before the new regulations were in effect?
The benefit to them is, in the B4 zoning district, you have the possibility of having a gas station and a drive-through use. Those uses require a special use permit, the public hearing through the Plan Commission, recommendation, and council action, but it is a possibility. Under the Warrenville, I'm sorry, under the Warrenville by Design overlay, those uses are specifically prohibited. It is no longer a possibility to have those uses. So it is to their benefit to get that application in before the Warrenville by Design zoning overlay was approved, so that they could be considered in the context of what was allowed beforehand.
Okay, and using the criteria that are used for every proposal that you mentioned, these aren't criteria just for this proposal. They're for any special use. The city is in a position to deny this if the city determines, or if the Plan Commission determines it's not appropriate, given our plans and what the community wants.
That is correct.
Okay, so, first meeting is this Thursday. If you have an opinion on what's coming up, it's very important that you're here to show support for the city council that has obviously taken into account all of the input from citizens and stakeholders in the community, that what we want on that corner does not include the proposal. Come and have your voice heard. Come back again for the second part of the second, the special meeting, where most likely the Plan Commission will take action and make a recommendation of the council. And finally, it comes to the council several weeks later for a final determination. So keep all those things on your calendar. We encourage you all to come and encourage us and your neighbors who have come forward in the past and come up with a plan that we feel is appropriate for the community that doesn't necessarily include what's being proposed. It's a good time to be heard in a positive way. Say, "This is what we want. This is what we don't want." And this is all available always on the website, so you know it's coming up. Amy, thank you so much for that very comprehensive report. Questions or comments from the council? Alderman Davalos?
Thank you, Mayor. So let me just ask a quick question. The overlay district at the corner of Batavia and Warrenville Road, that is a different overlay than the one on Batavia and Butterfield Road?
No, it's the same.
It's the same. So everything in that, so the overlay district is the whole city? There was some confusion, I think, when we, well, before we passed it, that that overlay district was just for that corner.
The overlay district includes what we call the civic center area here at the intersection of Butterfield and Batavia, and also the town center area at Warrenville and Batavia Roads.
Okay.
And the stretch in between. There are some, so that's the limits of the area of the overlay. And then within the overlay, there are a few different designations, the village shop front and town center and so on and so forth.
Okay, so it's just that one section of town?
Yes, it doesn't apply citywide.
Just confirming. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I would ask those of you who are watching tonight to share this information or access to this information, which you can get on our YouTube channel with people that may have concerns, so that they get some facts, and they also get a calendar of what's coming up. George, would you like to come up? You have to come to the... Sure. Well, to the, George, please. This, so folks at home can hear you.
George Wonsome, Amber Lane, Warrenville. You were pointing, you were talking about Batavia and Butterfield, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's all.
Yep. Yeah, there are two parts, as Amy brought up, two parts to the overlay. One is the old town part, and one is up here, the civic center part. Okay, thanks again, Amy. Well done. Any other comments from elected officials? Okay, no aldermen. Clerk?
Treasurer? I have a semantic point, completely devoid of policy, but I take Batavia Road going east-west. Batavia is west of here. I take Butterfield going east-west. So when South Batavia Road was closed, I had to do a double take, and I did another double take when you talked about the northwest corner of Butterfield and Batavia.
I'm with you. It's always confused me, too, but that's, I guess, the angle indicate, I don't know. Okay, anyone else? Administrator, I mean, anyone else, I'm sorry. And lawyer? All right, we're all set to move on then. Approval of the agenda this evening. Alderman Mider, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the August 19th, 2024 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second? Second by Alderman Krakenberg. Any changes or comments on the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The agenda is approved as presented. We have several sets of minutes, again, that need approval. Alderman Widener?
Thank you. I move to approve the minutes of the August 5th, 2024 City Council Regular Meeting, and to approve the minutes of the August 5th, 2024 City Council Closed Session Meeting, and to approve the minutes of the August 12th, 2024 Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Meeting.
Second? Second, again, by Alderman Krakenberg. Any discussion of those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes, again, are approved as presented. The consent agenda for this evening. Item 6A, accept staff recommendation, pass resolution R2024-47, supporting and authorizing an application for an open space lands acquisition and development grant for the Cerny Park Improvement Project, Phase 2. B, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2024-48, approving an agreement with M.E. Simpson for the Water Distribution System Valve Assessment Program. C, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2024-49, approving a First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Hitchcock Design Group for Cerny Park Improvements Final Design. D, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2024-50, approving an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between the city and the suburban bus division of the Regional Transportation Authority that would be paced for the provision of para-transit services. E, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2024-51, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Warrenville Park District for improvements to the Warrenville Park District property as part of the 2024 road program. F, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2024-52, approving agreements for the Enterprise Fleet Management Program, including fleet management services and the lease and maintenance of fleet vehicles. G, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and waive recollection of unbilled revenue from incorrectly billed water and sewer accounts during June and July 2024 billing cycles. H, receive and file minutes of the Bicycleists and Pedestrian Advisory Commission meeting on June 11th, held on June 11th and on July 9th, 2024. I, receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission meeting held on June 18th, 2024. J, receive and file minutes of the Inclusion Diversity Equity and Awareness Commission held, meeting held on June 18th, 2024. K, receive and file report of invoices up to, paid up to August 14th, 2024 in the amount of $129,484.77. And L, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before September 3rd, 2024 in the amount of $241,075.18. Alderman Widener?
Thank you. I move to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Second? Second by Alderman Davalos. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
And Alderman Agustinovich?
Aye.
Thank you, Julie. The agenda, the consent agenda is approved as presented. We have a couple of items under the regular agenda, item 7A. Who would like to make that motion? Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance O2024-34, amending Chapter 4 of Title VII of City Code regarding collection for water and sewer service.
Second?
Motion and a second. Discussion, we'll have our finance director, Kevin Dollstrand, give a little explanation of what it's about. Welcome, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you are aware, we switch to monthly billing beginning in May. We have had a number of issues with the bills being delivered to the recipients in a timely manner. Originally, we had set the period of time to pay the bills at 15 days, which if the post office was able to do their jobs effectively, would not have been an issue. However, since that is not the case, we are recommending that the period of time to pay bills be extended to 21 days. Additionally, we will be including all of our timing for billing, past dues, and turn-offs on the city website in the coming weeks, as we finalize all of those dates as well. But the recommendation tonight is to extend this to 21 days for payment of our city water and sewer bills.
Okay, good. Questions or comments from the council? Okay, makes perfect sense. Again, let's have a roll call, please.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkey?
Aye.
Alderman Agustinovich?
Aye.
And Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Motion carries, and thank you, Kevin, for working through these inevitable gulches as we, glitches as we change systems. We'll get there, right?
We will get there, absolutely.
Great, thank you. If I have a motion for item 7B, please. Alderman Kruckenberg?
I'd like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation and approve the wire transfer reports for the months of May, June, and July 2024, and direct finance staff to present future wire transfer reports for consideration on no less than a quarterly basis as part of future city council consent agendas.
Second?
Second by Alderman Davalos. Again, back to you, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We presented this item on a regular agenda because we just didn't want to spring it on anyone and not have anyone have an idea what this was. This actually came from my department. We do regular wire transfers to move money around, get it in the right pocket, per se, so that we can pay bills at the correct account. One of the things that occurs on occasion, we will have a wire transfer that goes out of the city accounts, and there was not really a mechanism in place to approve those. And the example would have been the debt service payment that we made in June on the bonds that we issued a year ago. So I felt that's a good idea to have a regular report on the city council agenda whereby all of the wire transfers are approved, that we do all the time. And I just felt it was to provide a little more transparency in addition to what we already do. And this first time, we wanted to have you approve them as a standalone item, since it's the first time you're seeing them, and then from then on, it will be part of the consent agenda.
Great. Again, questions or comments from the council? Other than thank you, Kevin, again, for always trying to make things a little bit better than they are, and a little bit easier for us to understand. That's appreciated very much. I think we can do a voice vote on this, can we not?
Kevin, can I just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Did these wire transfers are all complete?
They're all complete, yeah, correct.
Okay. Yes, a voice vote is fine.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and thanks again, Kevin. Okay, nothing under unfinished business, new business is an open category, there's nothing there. We do, however, have the need for a closed session this evening, so if I could have the citations and a motion, please. Alderman Berry?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of 5 ILCS 120/2, paren C, paren 1, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body, to determine its validity. 5 ILCS 120/2, paren C, paren 11, litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent. And 5 ILCS 120/2, paren C, paren 5, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired.
Second?
Motion and a second. All in favor? Oh, we have to do a roll call, I'm sorry. Roll call votes? Sorry, Julie.
It's okay. Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Agustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
And Alderman Wilkey?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are entering into executive session for discussion of the items listed. We will not be conducting any business after our executive session, so thank you for your attention this evening, and we'll see you next time around.